We'll roll call in 30 seconds here, stand by. Good afternoon and welcome to the February 9th City Council Public Hearing on Land Use Matters. I'll start by recognizing that the land we're talking about is traditional Treaty VI territory, a long, a home and gathering place for the Cree, the Dene, the Soto, the Blackfoot, and the Nakota Sioux peoples, as well as one of the great homelands of the Métis Nation. I'll roll call now to establish who we have in attendance from our councils, starting this time with Councillor McKee.
I am here, thank you.
Good afternoon, Councillor Nichol.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Councillor Paquette.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Councillor Walters. Oh, right, he had let me know he is doing a little bit of regional business on behalf of the city, so he's on assignment right now, he'll join us as quick as he can. Councillor Banga?
Happy National Pizza Day.
And a happy National Pizza Day to you too, Councillor Banga. Councillor Carmel?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councillor Katerina?
Hello.
Hello, Councillor Zadik?
I'm here.
Thank you, Councillor Essinger?
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Councillor Hamilton?
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Councillor Henderson?
I am here.
Live and on deck if needed, thank you, and Councillor Nack?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as set out before us, Councillor Esslinger, if you'd be so kind.
I'm happy to move the February 9th, 2021 City Council Public Hearing Agenda. There will be a referral, I don't know if you want that as part of the agenda or at a future date.
What's easier for administration?
Either is fine from the clerk's perspective.
Well, let's... There is a specific date set out in the referral motion? Yeah, let's do it as a separate motion, just in case there are any questions on it. If there aren't, it'll be quick, but let's approve the agenda with 3.4 and then we'll deal with the referral right off the top.
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Banga, any questions on the agenda? Not seeing any, please vote.
We're just missing your vote, Councillor Carmel.
Yes.
Thank you, we have 13 votes, Mr. Mayor.
Display the vote, please. Carried. Protocol items, we have one, which would be to welcome the Grade III class from Bisset School in Ward 12, and they're here with their teacher, virtually, they're watching on the live stream. Their teacher is Jennifer Moore, and so on behalf of Councillor Banga, who is the Ward 12 councillor, and all of us here at City Hall today, welcome to the Grade III class. Next up is the selection of items for debate, but what we could do is bring 3.4 forward.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor, if we could do the call for persons to speak?
Oh, right, we've got to do that before we... Yes, yes, let's do that. On item 3.1?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, is there anyone here to speak to item 3.1 by law 19151 to close portions of 127th Street Southwest, located west of 26th Avenue Southwest, Heritage Valley Town Center?
Yes, I have Chris Theeson to answer questions only. Chris, are you there?
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, and I have no one registered in opposition on this item.
Is there anyone to speak to item 3.2 by law 19152 to close portions of 127th Street Southwest, located west of James Moat Trail, Heritage Valley Town Center?
Yes, I have Chris Theeson again to answer questions only, and no one registered in opposition.
Is there anyone to speak to item 3.3 Charter by law 19546 to allow for low-density residential development, Chappelle?
Yes, I have Elise Schillington to answer questions only from Stantec.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and Peter Sukulas to answer questions only from Brookfield Residential.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and no one in opposition.
Is there anyone to speak to item 3.4 Charter by law 19547 to allow for industrial business uses, Prince Rupert?
I have no one registered in favor on this item, but I do have Marilyn Dumkey registered in opposition.
Yes, I'm here, and if it's deferred, I don't need to speak.
Okay, understood. You'll be welcome back on the date where it would be dealt with, of course, and if it is referred today, and I suspect it will be, it will be to a specific date, so...
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted on that, stand by, thank you. And then item 3.5, the Omnibus Text Amendments?
Yes, is there anyone to speak to item 3.5 Charter by law 19502 Omnibus Text Amendments to zoning by law 12800?
Yes, I have Carlos Yonel Yunus from the Official Edmonton Alberta Airbnb Host Club.
I believe that Carlos is on the line, but is not able to speak until it's his turn.
Okay, well, we'll work to accommodate him when we get to this item, and then I also have Ashley Salvador from Yeg Garden Suites.
Yes, hello.
Good afternoon. And then in opposition, I have Kevin Calderon.
I believe that he has withdrawn his request to speak when our office followed up with him just a few minutes ago.
Okay. Then next in opposition, I have Adeni Yiogunlena.
They did not check in, but our office is reaching out to them as well.
Yeah, hello, I'm online here, sorry to come in late, so is it okay for me to speak on?
It will be when we get to the item, I'm just taking attendance essentially right now, so glad you could join us, and we'll come back to you when we get to that item, but thank you for identifying yourself.
Thank you.
And then last but not least on this item, I have Jan Hardstaff from the Park Allen Civics Community, or Committee. Jan, are you there?
It shows that she just left the meeting, but she has been checked in.
Okay. Last but not... Yes?
Apologies, is there anyone to speak to item 3.6 Charter by law 19503 Bold Moves Text Amendments to zoning by law 12800?
Yes, I have Amanda Bolan from the Infill Development in Edmonton Association.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have Mick Graham.
Hello.
Also from Idea, welcome. I have Mariah Samgee, also from Idea.
Happy Pizza Day.
Welcome. And Chelsea Jorzak. Also...
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And then in opposition, I have Beverly Zubot from the Park Allen Community League. Bev, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Good afternoon. I have Sharon Bolton, also from Park Allen Community League.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and finally Diane Forbes, also from Park Allen.
Yes, I'm also present.
Excellent, well, is there anybody else who's registered since then?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Now...
Sorry, it's Jan Hardstaff here, I actually inadvertently shut off my... I exited the meeting, but I am here speaking in opposition to the zoning by law Omnibus, just to clarify.
To item 3.5? Not 3.6, right? To the Omnibus, is what we have you down for, Jan?
It's 3.6.
Is... Well, you know what, we'll just check offline to see which batch of zoning bylaw amendments Jan wishes to speak to, and clarify that when we get to them. It can be either, so, or both, should the need arise. So, now let's deal with the referral of 3.4. Someone want to move referral of that item?
I'm happy to move referral, Mr. Mayor, there's some specific wording about that?
Yep.
Can I read that in?
Please.
That by law 19547 be referred to the March 16th, 2021 City Council Public Hearing and include additional information regarding provincial standards and regulations for the operation of crematoriums?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councillor Banga, are there any questions on the referral? Anyone wishing to speak to it?
I'm happy to speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
If no one else has anything to contribute, then you may close, Councillor Essinger.
Thank you, I understand that this is being referred because we did not put up a sign and we needed to allow some time to post a sign. With that, the concern from the community is about the actual crematorium, one of the discretionary uses, so having the information come back together will allow us to have a full dialogue on March 16th.
Thank you for that, please vote on the referral.
We're still missing a number of votes, that I think there's just a delay in them coming in, we're just missing Councillor Katerina now.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, we have 12 votes.
Display the vote, please. And referral of the Prince Rupert item is carried, so Ms. Dumkey will consider this item again on March 16th. Okay. Then now let's select from the remaining items. Speakers list open. Councillor Henderson, start us off.
Yeah, just, I'll select the two that we have opposition speakers on, so that would be 3.5 and 3.6.
So noted, Councillor Henderson selected the zoning bylaw text amendments, and... Are there any selections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move closure of 3.1, 2, and 3.
Thank you, Councillor Katerina's moved closure of 3.1, 2, and 3, I'll just check one more time to see if anyone had any questions, wish to select those, seeing none, then please vote on closure of the public hearing.
We're still missing a number of votes, again, I can see that everyone's in the right meeting, but there's a delay in them coming to me. Councillor Katerina?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, and Councillor Essinger?
Yes.
Thank you, and Councillor Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you, and Councillor Paquette?
Yes.
Thank you, we have 12 votes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, display the vote. Carried.
I'll move first reading of 3.1, 2, and 3. Second.
On first reading, please vote.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councillor Katerina.
I'm also a yes.
Thank you, Councillor Hamilton. And we're also missing Councillors Essinger, Henderson, and Paquette. Thank you, we have 12 votes.
Display the vote, please. And that's carried.
I'll move second reading of 3.1, 2, and 3. Second.
Please vote on second reading.
I'm a yes.
Yes, Madam Clerk. Yes.
And yes.
Thank you, we have 12 votes, Mr. Mayor.
Display the vote, please. Carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move consideration for third reading on 3.1, 2, and 3. Second.
To allow third reading to proceed on these bylaws, please vote.
Yes. Yes, Madam Clerk.
And we're just missing your vote, Councillor Essinger. Oh, and it's come through, we have 12 votes, Mr. Mayor.
Display the vote. Carried.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll move third reading of 19151, 19152, and 19546. Second.
Thank you, please vote on third and final reading of these bylaws.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And we're just missing your vote, Councillor Essinger.
Yes.
Thank you, we have 12 votes, Mr. Mayor.
Display the vote. And that's carried. All right. So we have just two items left, but they are substantial, so we'll start with the Omnibus Text Amendments and item 3.5. I've got the presentation first.
And Mr. Mayor, I can confirm Jan Hardstaff intended to speak to item 3.6, not item 3.5.
Oh, okay. Well, we still have other speakers on 3.5, but we'll note Ms. Hardstaff transposed to speak on 3.6 in opposition. Okay, so let's get the presentation nonetheless for 3.5.
Good afternoon, Members of council, there are two related text amendment bylaws that were first presented as a draft markup to zoning by law 12800 at the Urban Planning Committee meeting on October 27th, 2020, as part of a report related to zoning by law Omnibus 2020. In that October report, to you, the Urban Planning Committee Administration divided up the proposed amendments into a cleanup and bold move categories. Bylaw 19502, item 3.5 primarily deals with the cleanup items, while bylaw 19503 deals with the bold move items. For clarity and simplicity, we will provide a brief presentation on both bylaws, and this presentation will focus on item 3.5, which are the amendments mostly cleanup in nature. I will now turn it over to Adam Shamchuk to take you through a short presentation on item 3.5. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So Charter by law 19502 is a continuation of the cleanup amendments which appeared at Urban Planning Committee on October 27th, 2020. A few small changes have been made to the markups that were proposed at committee last October, and those changes are detailed in the accompanying reports and attachments in front of you today. I do wish to highlight one particular change on 19502 in comparison to what was at Urban Planning Committee last October, and that is the addition of short-term rental amendments to create parity between short-term rental operators who live in the home and those that do not live in the home, which we often call shared home rentals and entire home rentals. The intent of that amendment is to add parity, and that is a continuation of discussions from the September 29th report on that topic in 2020 of last year at Urban Planning Committee. So, if I could have the second slide on engagement, thank you. Part of the way we remade our work on this file was in the question of how to approach engagement on an Omnibus amendment overall. One of the tactics used was to leverage the engagement opportunities that we have every day through our permit service with clients and members of the public. Every time a frontline staff person interacts with an applicant or a member of the public on a permit file, there is a potential opportunity to learn from that experience, which is exactly what we've done here. By working closely with frontline staff to understand common points of frustration and drawing from other initiatives such as the Permitting and Licensing Improvement Initiative related to understanding and improving customer experience, Administration was able to identify numerous opportunities for improvements in the bylaw that had a direct connection to a real-world challenge someone had experienced somewhere along the way. Beyond the day-to-day contacts which Administration has with our permit service, clients, and the general public, we also engage regularly with the diversity of stakeholder groups, whether that's EFCL or some of the other advocacy groups that we've seen on this committee list, including UDI, the Idea, Yeg Garden Suites. Feedback and learnings from those pre-existing touchpoints with stakeholder groups informed several of the proposed amendments. At Urban Planning Committee on October 27th, 2020, several speakers expressed concerns related to informing residents of new Class A infill development permits by way of mail, which was proposed to be taken out of the zoning bylaw. That day, committee and later on, as directed by council to Administration, we were told not to advance Charter bylaws which reflected that Class A infill development regulation be taken out, so that is not in either Charter by law 19502 or in 19503. So prior to advancing the Omnibus report to Urban Planning Committee last year, we shared the report, as is our custom, with Omnibus amendments to all the community leagues as with a stakeholder group, so they had an opportunity to review the proposed amendments, offer feedbacks, and ask questions of staff. There was also an opportunity subsequent to that in advance of this public hearing meeting to do exactly the same. So, if I may have the last slide for next steps, the next steps on this are relatively brief, we support this proposed Charter by law, Charter by law 19502, thank you, and we are available for any questions you have. I may note that 3.6 has a separate presentation, which we are also prepared, thank you.
So, did you also wish to register on that item, to present on 3.6?
We do have a more detailed presentation that speaks to the bold move components that was not touched on in this, so I would suggest, yes, we would like to speak to that.
No, no, I just want to make sure that...
This, Adam was a member of Administration.
Of course. All right, so that's the admin presentation, sorry, I miscued on the slides. All right, now we'll hear from the speakers then on 3.5, starting with Carlos Yonel Yunus.
I apologize, I'm not in a place to speak just at this moment, would Yegs want to be able to go ahead a minute, please?
We can adjust the order, I think, but you'll need to be ready in as little as five minutes, depending on whether there are any questions for Ms. Salvador, so we can move ahead to Ashley Salvador on behalf of Yeg Garden Suites.
Mr. Mayor, may I just suggest that we read the instructions for the speakers, just so they're clear?
That is a good suggestion, so the clerk, the clerks called out the bylaws, and we've selected the ones that we're going to discuss. The way this will work is we'll have a presentation, apparently I need a refresher on this today too, so, we got a presentation on each one of the bylaws from Administration, then members of the public are invited to speak virtually using Google Meet. Those in favor will speak first, followed by those opposed. Each will have five minutes to make comments. The clerk will run the official timer here in the room, however, attendees participating virtually may wish to use a timer at home too. When the speaker is finished, please stay on the line, as council may wish to ask you questions. After comments from the public, council may ask questions of city administration. After all the speakers have concluded, I'll then ask each speaker if they wish to speak to new information which arose during the public hearing. This can require some patience to assure that anyone who does wish to address council has an opportunity, and thereafter council may close the public hearing and debate the bylaw. For those participating virtually, please refrain from using the chat function in Google Meet during the meeting, as it can create issues of decorum, it may provide unfair advantage, and it can also technically interfere with the live stream. Additionally, please remember to mute your microphone when you're not presenting or answering questions. If you're experiencing any difficulties, the offices city clerk has resources available to facilitate communication with those participating in statutory public hearing process. Please reach out to them using the contact information provided in your registration or via city.clerk@edmonton.ca. Thanks for that reminder, Madam Clerk. Carlos, are you in a place where you can present now, or do you need a few more minutes?
I need a few more minutes, I apologize.
Okay, then we'll go to Ms. Salvador.
Hi there, and I'm actually realizing, if possible, can I be moved to 3.6?
Certainly.
Okay, that would make more sense, thank you.
Okay, yeah, if you don't have comments on 3.5, then we will put you on 3.6. However, that now means that Mr. Yonel Yunus will need to hear from you very shortly here.
Okay, I'll do my best, so I apologize if there's a lot of background noise, forgive me for that. My name is Carlos Yonel Yunus, I am the community leader for the Edmonton Alberta Official Airbnb Host Club, and I'm also a member of Yemton Short-Term Rental Association. I run a company that is mainly corporate housing, but also is involved in other short-term rental ventures as well. I, on behalf of any of the members of our groups, we are very happy with the way the bylaw is moving forward with two-person, where the host lives in the dwelling, where they're not required to get a major home-based business permit, it makes a lot of sense, to be able to provide the housing, so there would be no addition to parking and other things like that, and as well, they're typically the most carefully watched and taken care of type of situation, where there's the least number of complaints that come up. One area that we are hoping that there can be some changes on is, if it would be possible, there's still no distinction made for legal suites, so legal suites are still viewed as part of the dwelling, even though legally there are two separate dwellings, so that's one area that we are still seeing a lot of frustration from people who paid the money and got the permits to make a legal suite, finding that they have to pay for the exact same thing over again, so that's one area. An example of this would be if somebody has a one-bedroom basement suite that they live in, and they are looking to put out the three-bedroom upstairs suite, now they are still required to get a major home-based permit, even though they're able to put the time and the money in to be able to have that suite. Overall, we're extremely happy with the direction that this bylaw is moving, we feel there's still some room for improvement, and with like COVID-19 that's affected our industry, a lot of things are different than they were last time, and a big part of that is we no longer have big group issues that we've had, so we're... So we're grateful for council and administration taking the time to continue to address this discipline. It's exciting to see what we're doing.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Yonel Yunus? Not seeing any, then we will hear now from Adam Nini Organlana.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for giving me the time to talk. And I would like to first apologize. I think I chose opposition to the, to 3.5. I was meant to choose 4. I guess Carlos spoke what I was about to say in terms of clarity in the bylaw for legacies, right? Because legacies are like separate entity, are their separate dwellings. So I think it should be clear, it should be clear in the bylaw, that's just what I just wanted to add on to 3.5. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any, then we'll turn now to questions of city planners on item 3.5. Counselor Henderson, you'd selected it, so I'll go to you first.
Yeah, well, just to follow up on this question that's just been asked of us twice by the two speakers, your thoughts on that? I mean, I think, I'm guessing it's the difference between a business license and a development permit, but am I correct?
It is. A business license is still required for short-term rentals. The amendment is allowing for the shared home rentals to not require a development permit.
Right, so this is only dealing with development piece. Even once you have this development piece, which would make it legal for you to have the two different dwellings, you would still have to go and get a business license to make one of them essentially a business?
Correct.
Or both of them?
Yeah, one business, it's for the owner.
One business license for the owner. So even if both, even if both units were being, were being short-term rental out, they would still, they would, that would be considered one business?
Correct.
And you would need a business license. Okay, so that's, that's really an entirely different matter that isn't dealt with in the zoning bylaw.
Correct.
And is there for other good reasons. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Essinger.
Thank you. I just want to add this, ask a question of clarity that I've been asked by a community member. If I understand it correctly, for garden suites, we are now going to allow childcare services and major home businesses as well as the secondary suites. Is that correct?
Counselor Essinger, I'm going to pass this to the team to answer.
Yeah, the intent of the bylaw, Counselor Essinger, is to enable those types of uses in combination with secondary garden suites, yes.
Okay, and, and major home businesses would also be allowed in the garden suites? Is that correct?
Yes, there's no prohibition on that in the regulations being proposed.
Okay, there is just some confusion from a community member. That's all my question.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Nack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this may sound like a very, very small question. I just wanted to double check. In 24.4, which was the notice of rezoning amendments, and we talk, we were changing the wording to reflect BIAs instead of the BRZs, the old system. I was just curious if, we defined that they should be contacting the president of the BIAs, and I'm just curious if it should not just read that, you know, we're to contact the BIA instead of specifying whether it's the president or the executive director. I imagine there might be flexibility depending on each BIA you're dealing with.
Yeah, I think my familiarity with BIAs is that they do tend to each have a president or a similar function on the board, and this gets the information into the hands of the members that are elected by the business communities to represent them. It's a fair comment, I think, as far as a cleanup goes, to be honest, we perhaps could have gone farther and addressed the organizational structure of the BIAs. On the other side, this can be further cleaned up through the course of renewal if that turns out to be an issue. I have not heard that as an issue, though, Counselor Nack.
No problem, yeah, I know it was a very silly, minor question, but I just thought I'd ask it because I saw it there, and I wanted to make sure we weren't being so prescriptive that we ended up making it actually harder on ourselves. But if you're good with that for now, then maybe that can be a cleanup at a future, and want to just define BIAs, so. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're most welcome. Any other questions for administration? Any new information which arose during the public hearing?
I'm happy to move closure then of item 3.5.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Nack. Please vote on closure of the hearings on bylaw 19502.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor Katerina.
Also, just to let the clerks know I'm back, I'll vote yes to Counselor Walters.
Thank you, Counselor Walters, and we're good to go. We have 13 votes.
Display the vote, please. Carried.
I'll move first reading of 3.5.
Need a second or still?
Oh, sorry, second.
Yeah, no worries, okay. Please vote on first reading.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
We have 13 votes, Pastor Mayor.
Display the vote, please. Carried.
I will move second reading of item 3.5.
Second.
Please vote on second reading.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
We have 13 votes.
Thank you. Display the vote. Carried unanimously.
We'll move consideration of third reading of item 3.5.
Second.
Please vote.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
We're just missing Counselor Zadix's vote. Thank you, we have 13 votes.
Display the vote. Carried.
And I will move third and final reading of Charter bylaw 19502.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor Katerina. We're good to go.
Display the vote, please. Carried. All right. Last but not least, the bold moves text amendments.
As you've heard from me before, administration has been cautious to advance further amendments to zoning bylaw 12800 in light of the ongoing zoning bylaw renewal initiative. However, the events of 2020 forced administration to act in response of the unprecedented economic conditions related to the depressed commodity prices, which was later amplified by the emergence of the global COVID-19 pandemic. These circumstances created an urgent need to amend our bylaw in order to streamline processes for our permit clients in a way that will reduce red tape and allow for the refocusing and redeployment of staff resources from low-risk, low-impact work towards more development that merit attention in consideration of their complexity or impact. While 2020 was a challenging year, there were also exciting milestones reached for the city, most notably the city plan. With city plan being approved, Edmontonians and council have given clear direction on how the city will grow over time, and it will take time to realign our regulatory and policy framework to the new city plan. The bylaw before you today in item 3.6 will allow our permit service to be more nimble in response to changing conditions to benefit our permit service clients. While we are keen to focus our effort and resources on the zoning bylaw renewal, as it will represent a major milestone on realigning our rules and regulations with what city plan directs us to do, we are proposing amendments in this charter bylaw that will help us begin realizing certain aspects of city plan sooner. For example, several of the amendments are intended to support increased intensification of mature and established neighborhoods with gentle density and increased mixing of uses in our communities. Charter bylaw 19503 are based on the bold moves heard at Urban Planning Committee in late 2020. These bold moves will help the city reimagine and realign our permit service in important ways that will help us deliver a better customer experience, realize development outcomes that reflect city plan direction, and make more efficient use of our limited resources by shifting staff focus to higher-impact developments and off of relatively low-risk and low-impact developments. I will ask Adam Shamchak from administration to further the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Engagement work done for Charter bylaw 19503 was part and parcel of the overall zoning bylaw omnibus 2020 project, and it was bundled up with the engagement work that was done as part of Charter bylaw 19502. Urban Planning Committee in October of last year served as a key point of public engagement on the proposed amendments, and council later acted on the input that we heard there to advance, to direct administration to advance the proposed amendments contained in that report, CRE 487, with the exception of the amendments around mail-out Class A notifications, which I spoke to earlier. Could I have slide three, please, for feedback? One of the topics of discussion at that Urban Planning Committee in October 27, 2020, was the proposed changes to section 11/4 of the bylaw, which defines the limitation on variances. We were discussing about the legal interpretation of that section, as well as concerns about how the proposed amendment may open the door to projects, which otherwise it would have been refused, on the basis of the negative impacts it could have on neighbors or neighborhoods. To be very clear on this, administration is proposing an amendment which is intended to expand the opportunities where a variance may be considered, which presently is limited to circumstances of hardship or practical difficulties. This proposed amendment will in no way lessen the level of consideration that development officers have to take in assessing if a proposed development impacts neighbors or a neighborhood when contemplating granting a variance request. If I could have the next slide, please. So the bold moves enabled by this charter bylaw, they have a more substantive impact to service outcomes, customer experience, and build outcomes in comparison to cleanup amendments, which were just discussed under Charter bylaw 19502. Some of the changes proposed in Charter bylaw 19503 include allowing for slightly increased intensification of residential lots, expanding opportunities for gentle densification of existing neighborhoods and buildings, such as through the conversion of single-family homes to duplexes and semi-detached housing, by expanding opportunities for secondary suites and home-based businesses, and allowing dwellings in combination with commercial uses in more circumstances, adding to the list of types of developments which are exempt from a development permit, such as changes to on-premise sign copy and decks up to 1.2 meters in height, allowing for more flexibility in communicating with the public about development, such as eliminating the required advertised land development applications in the newspaper, extending timelines, such as increasing allowable duration of special events to 45 days from 30 days, or allow permit holders to request modest extensions to a permitting expiration date, increasing opportunities where a development officer may consider a variance. So those are some of the things that are proposed in Charter bylaw 19503. However, there is a comprehensive list of the proposed amendments and supporting rationale for each in the accompanying reports. If I could have the next slide, please. Thank you for your time today. Administration supports this charter bylaw, Charter bylaw 19503. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll loop back around to questions in a bit, but first we'll hear now from the speakers registered in favor, starting with Amanda Bolin.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of IDEA and 180 Infill, but more so I am here on behalf of ones who are in a position similar to the one I was several years ago. I rented for many years, and when I was finally in a position to buy, there were very few options available, available to me in the mature neighborhood where I lived. I was a young, single professional, not interested in taking on the maintenance of an older home or paying exorbitant condo fees. My option ended up being a townhome in Rutherford. I'm very proud of where we are now today and the progressive steps Edmonton has taken for infill. It has been a real struggle for us the past year or so and many other small businesses during this pandemic, but the creation of multi-unit housing and increased opportunities for secondary suites has been a lifeline for us and a means to help others. Slide one, please. This slide shows a fourplex development that we were hoping to build when multi-unit housing came into play. It is on a very large but shallow RF3 lot. This development would have been possible had secondary suites not been defined as only allowed within multi-unit housing that is only in the form of row housing. In order to provide suites at this location, a block from Bonny Dune future LRT stop, we had to remove dwelling number D. This had a significant affordability impact on the remaining three townhomes. Slide two, please. I'm asking that the definition of secondary suites be changed to remove the restriction of multi-unit housing in the form of row housing only. We need this so that we can find more locations to build attainable housing. My message to you is that this will promote housing of more RF3 lots, such as the one I showed earlier. This amendment works in harmony with the other changes being proposed. These bill forms are buildable, and we need them now. Slide, please, three. Slide three, please. Figure 3.1 shows a row house on 150-foot-deep lot, but more often than not, I'm finding shallower RF3 lots that do not support the row house configuration. The two examples on the right have the same height, coverage, and setbacks, but we cannot provide secondary suites in these because they are not in a row. The Land use bylaw defines row housing attached on the sides only. That's not the case with the building code. The building code considers all three of these examples forms of row housing. Code considerations are straightforward and are outlined in a document the city has already provided, the Secondary Suite Design Guide. Slide four, please. The same applies to the examples shown in figure 4.2 and 4.3. Again, not row housing and no suites allowed, yet compare them to what I have shown in figure 4.1. This is a semi-detached with secondary suites and a garden suite, part of the bold moves text amendments allowed on RF1 and RF2 lots, but I cannot build these very similar homes on an RF3 lot. I have land, and I have a design on hold in Hollywood right now, waiting for that text amendment to go through so that I can move forward. All of the examples I've shown you today are on RF3 and RF5 lots that I have found in the past months during my search for, to build multi-unit housing, but they do not support row housing, therefore no secondary suites. Slide five, please. As with any form of stacked housing, there is no single path within the building code. It is up to each applicant to decide upon their respective path to meet the building code's intent. IDEA has engaged with Safety Code section of Development Services regarding our proposed amendments, and specifically the one you see here, 5.3. I personally provided a proposed method of construction for this building. They are aware of our intent and what I am conveying to you today. The structure is buildable. Last year, they released a document addressing suites in duplexes. This document highlights the same considerations that would be applicable to the building before you. Figure 5.3 is essentially two duplexes with suites, a form allowed in the land use bylaw, but attached side by side. A development permit is not attainable for six suites because of the lot coverage of this lot. Should the definition be amended, we are happy to collaborate with Safety Codes to provide further consideration for construction of this building if it is needed. I have a fourplex structure under construction, very similar to this in Queen Alexandra, without secondary suites. If I could build it again with suites, I would. To reiterate, this amendment promotes more attainable housing in infill. It works in line with other amendments being proposed today, and these are feasible options for our industry's builders. Edmonton needs these changes to go through now to aid recovery, but also so that we could be planning now and still have a chance to implement them in the upcoming build season. Thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from members of council? Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
Well, just, just a quick question. I suspect, and I did a double-check, I think, with law beforehand, that we cannot do this without re-advertising this entire bylaw. So I think, just to ask that right to you upfront, because I suspect all four of the people from IDEA are gonna, I'm guessing, are gonna make a similar kind of presentation. I don't think, this may be well something we should be considering, but I suspect it's better considered as a subsequent piece of work. I don't imagine you would want us to hold up this bylaw in order to do this piece of work, so I just want to check that with you.
No, we do not want to hold up the changes in the bylaw. We did speak with them briefly beforehand. I do not understand why, what the legal implications are that are not possible.
I think, I think their argument would be, and I'll ask this question when we get there, but I thought it'd be a bit preemptive, so that, you know, I think the problem is, it's a significant enough change, it would have to be re-advertised. No one- No one else would have had a chance to see this except you, so it's a legal requirement to advertise. The public wouldn't know this request was coming. So, just as a heads-up beforehand, before we get there, I thought I'd ask it now so that we can put that in perspective for you. So, it's not to say we can't discuss this, but I suspect the only way to discuss it as part of this bylaw change would be to send the whole thing back, and I'm guessing that's not what you guys are asking for. Correct?
Correct. Not to send the whole thing back.
Great, thanks.
Counselor McKean?
Yeah, Ms. Boland, I'm hoping you can help me here. I know we have opposition today, and I know there will be pain points ahead for people who would be seeing a project like this go in on their block. So, could you articulate for me, I'm sure you've had discussions about this, what is the benefit to this for the community at large today and in the future? Why would we, in other words, why would we allow this? What is the good to come of it, please?
Well, right now, as it stands, because of shallow lots and because secondary suites are so dependent on the configuration of the townhome, we have large lots that would sustain housing with rental opportunities, like income helper homes, and we have the opportunity to provide more homes on a single lot, but due to the configuration, we can't. So, these homes I'm talking about are townhomes that would support young families, young professionals, such as myself, and we would only be in a position to, we're restricted because of the configuration. So, we would just, it's really to provide more housing to these neighborhoods for ones that require a more attainable cost.
So, it opens up to sort of, for people to be able to afford to live in these core communities, more of them, and what about things like attracting families, kids, that sort of thing? Do you think that's ultimately going to be the result of a move like this?
Oh, absolutely. As I said before, we're just, we're restricted on the locations that we can build this, and being able to provide more means that there's more opportunities for families and young ones.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson, if you could take the chair?
Absolutely. So, Ms. Boland, thank you for providing some tangible examples, and I think the point about side-by-side configurations makes sense, and flexibility around that. I guess, with respect to the up-down duplex with a suite underneath that you put up, how is that not an apartment building? Because that is also described in our zoning bylaw elsewhere as an apartment, and I think allowing that but not calling it an apartment might be misleading, I guess. So, convince me that that wouldn't be an apartment building with six units configured that way.
Because you can't separate the secondary suite from the principal dwelling that it is attached to. That is one title. That is giving somebody the ability to buy that dwelling and have a rental income. It's in structure, we can't, on smaller lots, I wouldn't be able to call that an apartment building in the Land Use Bylaw because of site coverage. I could call it four principal dwellings with two secondary suites. So, as soon as you go to a duplex with a secondary suite, that is in some way also called an apartment building when we're looking at the building code, but when it comes to providing rental income on these smaller lots, that's why we are putting secondary suites in our homes, to help people get the financing and be able to afford to live there.
And I think that's a strong argument for it from a market diversity and affordability point of view, so I think that makes sense. I'll be interested to hear what the other speakers have to say about, practically speaking, what that is. Since we've made the parking changes, this is also much more feasible, too. So, at any rate, I appreciate your presentation. I'll listen to what other folks have to say as well here. I'll take the chair back, and I don't see any further questions for you, Ms. Boland. Thank you very much. Next will be Mick Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a PowerPoint here as well. Hopefully, that'll get fired up. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Let me begin by expressing my support for the changes to the zoning bylaw proposed by Administration. I'm in favor of all of them, however, like Ms. Boland, I'd like to see a minor change made in addition, by way of explanation and to follow on with what my colleague was saying. A fourplex configured this way, we're fine to put basement suites in. Can I have the next slide, please? Fourplex configured this way, and this is a photograph, a photo I took in Calgary about five years ago, and the landscaping looks fairly mature, so I think they've been doing these mid-block fourplexes for quite a while. So, this is showing the two front units. You can see the amenity, the little screen in the front to create the amenity area for the front units. If you go to the next slide, that's what it looks like from the back. So, there are two units at the back. The entrances are along the sides, if you can go to the next slide. So, that's what the entrance looks like to the back. Next slide, please. That's the rear amenity area. So, it checks all the boxes. I had some preliminary drawings done. If we can get to the next slide, please. Again, we've got two in front and two in back. The two rear units are slightly wider, so to present the entrance somewhat to the street. Next slide, please. This shows the main floor, and you can see the entrance to the secondary suites as well. Secondary suites are envisioned in the basement of these. I doubt that they had secondary suites in the ones in Calgary. Calgary doesn't seem to be able to get its collective head around secondary suites as a thing. So, one more slide, please. This is showing a one-bedroom suite in the basement of this building. I've got investor clients who would like to build these buildings. I have one potential one in Baldwin and another one in Hazel Dean, and it makes no sense to me that we can have secondary suites in the fourplex only on a corner lot. It seems like we're, in effect, creating a separate use class for buildings on corner lots. And I understand that Administration is working hard on the zoning bylaw renewal project, and I don't in any way want to put the brakes on that or derail the piece of proposed legislation today, but this seems to be such an easy win, and for me, without really taking it to the streets and trying to drum up business, I've got about $2 million in work that's ready to go, and this is money that's going to local plumbers and lumber suppliers and electricians. It's not money that's going into anyone's bank account in the Caymans, you know, and as Ms. Petron pointed out, we're doing what we can to cope with the pandemic, and I'd hate to see a job like this go begging. So, yeah, what I'm asking is to make the minor text changes that were presented in the letter that IDEA sent, as long as it's not going to derail this whole proposed bylaw change today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Not seeing any? Okay, self-explanatory then, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mariah Sanji.
Good afternoon. I do have a presentation that should be coming up momentarily, but I can start while they're loading it. I wanted to first say how grateful we are for the work that Administration has put into the omnibus and the bold moves. The stress on the real estate market started before the pandemic with the oil prices. However, even with the movements in the real estate market over 2020, investors and homeowners do need certain things to make homes financially affordable, especially in the mature neighborhood context. I'm here today to speak to a particular development style. For the person who's controlling the slides, can you move it to Slide 2? Thank you so much. At present day, you can build fourplexes in a row, as you have heard. The bylaw specifically says it must be in a row to allow suites. However, you cannot have suites when it's configured in a four-square or up-down context. You asked, what is the good? Our current rule promotes style that needs significant amount of stairs. It's counterintuitive for those looking for options to age in their community. I know my knees aren't great right now due to a skating accident I had when I was younger, but I can imagine those who are looking to age in place, they would see that as a huge barrier for those wanting to downsize and stay in the neighborhoods that they have connections in. If you can switch the slide, please. Next, it also incentivizes housing styles that deal with the privacy and overlook discussions that we've had at public hearings in the past. If we don't make this change and create an alternative that can get financing from investors and can be bought by people who need a secondary suite to offset their mortgage, we won't be able to do these feasibly. In the letter we sent up front, research and communication has done on the specific ask. At Urban Planning Committee, we heard that there may be some concerns around the codes, so we engaged with Safety Codes and had many conversations and workshop the idea with them to find solutions and a way forward. We also reached out to the EFCL to get their perspective. They were generally supportive on the idea because of the reduced privacy concerns that it would bring forward, but they did want more clarity on the codes, which we can now give to them. You asked earlier, do we want this to delay the whole thing? We definitely do not, but we do think with the upfront work that we've done, we can work with Administration and bring back the solution in the next six to eight weeks so that we don't miss the next two to three construction seasons if we do wait for the zoning bylaw renewal project. I again want to thank you so much for your time and consideration today and for all the work that Administration has done. This is unprecedented times on so many levels, and I'd love to see Edmonton move forward with as many opportunities as they can to build housing options for people who need them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Sanji?
I have Counselor McKean on the board.
Counselor McKean, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Sanji. Sorry to hear about your knees, but as someone of my advanced age, I can commiserate. First of all, so, we have had these flanking projects come to us on corner lots and the privacy concerns and other concerns raised by them. Are you suggesting, is it your submission, that this would be an alternative to that that would alleviate many of those concerns?
Yes, the projects that you saw that Ms. Boland and Mr. Graham brought forward, as well as many other projects that our members are looking to build, would help to reduce having four people or four homeowners and families look over the existing homeowner to the side home, where you could build it facing the same lot line, and reduce the amount of overlook and privacy concerns.
And would the massing at height be any different, then?
No, it would not.
Okay. This wouldn't guarantee that we would prevent that style of housing proposal that has caused consternation for some of us, but this would be an optional way to get to four units on a corner lot, and it's your submission that secondary suites would be allowed there, why not here? In a nutshell, yes?
Yes. As the bylaw is currently written right now, it does incentivize the row style, which increases the overlook and the privacy concerns, but if we were to make this change, it would allow for the other styles to be as lucrative and attract investors, which would then have a bump-on effect and have those projects move forward, which would help with some of the concerns the community is having right now.
I'm much clearer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson.
Well, just to be clear, to make sure, I think I'm pretty sure I understand what's talking here, if we're talking about the up-down option, which is the old-style duplex, it would actually allow six units on a lot, not eight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the townhouse option that would be permitted right now would allow for eight units, correct?
That's correct.
And the front back, which you're proposing, would allow for eight, but the up-down would be limited to six, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Ms. Sanji?
Thank you so much.
Not seeing any. Thank you so much. Next is Chelsea Drazak.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Actually, I don't have a presentation today. I'm just registered to speak to answer questions only in case there was any additional questions.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Drazak?
I'd like to jump in with one.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Drazak, you have actually been one that has brought a couple of those, I'll use the word controversial, but the flanking row house project with the overlook concerns. You deal in the marketplace. Do you think that the market is ready to accept or support or actually invest in the kind of housing that is being, was described by Mr. Graham and Ms. Sanji in their presentations? Or are we still likely to see those row houses, flanking row houses with overlook?
Well, you know, I don't think that we will not see them anymore, but I think that by leveling the playing field, we'll see other options start to emerge. So, the last RF1 to RF3 rezoning that I brought to council, which was in the fall of last year, the proponent actually had drawings also similar to Mick Graham put together already that had the up-down configuration with two suites in the basement. So, that's something that, you know, people are really looking at seriously and trying to accomplish, so I think by removing this barrier, we will see that start coming forward more and more, and then we'll start mitigating some of these flanking issues that have been quite, you know, commonly discussed at council.
In your role, it might be that you would suggest that the overlook concerns might cause problems and that this would be another way to get at that.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Thank you very much. Thanks, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Drazak? Not seeing any at this time. Thank you so much. Next is Ashley Salvador.
Hello, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am speaking on behalf of Yagarden Suites in full support of the proposed amendments. First, just want to thank Administration for their work on this. We're pleased to see a number of positive changes that will enable the development of more diverse and innovative housing options. At the same time, today's changes will create efficiencies- housing options. At the same time, today's changes will create efficiencies in service delivery for the city of Edmonton, saving both time and resources. The amendments will also help bridge the gap between now and the 2022 zoning bylaw renewal. So Yagarden Suites has been actively involved in the zoning bylaw renewal project and are really excited to see that going forward. Now, I just wanted to highlight a few amendments that we are particularly supportive of supportive of related to garden suites. First, we're excited to see that garden suites will now be allowed with semi-detached housing or multi-unit housing in the form of row housing. Uh, second, allowing garden suites and secondary suites in conjunction with semi-detached and row housing. And we're also pleased to see that major home-based businesses will be allowed on sites with secondary suites and garden suites, which was just dealt with in item 3.5. Uh, but just want to reiterate that that's really going to open up a lot of opportunities for local entrepreneurs and businesses. So over the last few years, as an organization, Yagarden Suites has received inquiry after inquiry from families and homeowners who are looking to build suites in contexts beyond just single-family homes. So this really is a big step forward. And we do believe that these zoning reforms will positively influence the development of Edmonton's housing and urban form. You know, currently, millions of dollars of private private investment and tax revenue are being left on the table, and Edmontonians are not accessing the types or tenures of housing they want and need. Voting in favor of today's proposed changes, it's a it's a pragmatic step, you know, moving us towards a more sustainable city that will ultimately help meet the evolving needs of our residents. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Salvador? Not seeing any. Thank you all for your presentations uh in favor. And now we'll hear from those registered in opposition, starting with Bev Zubat.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm here uh speaking on behalf of Park Allen Community League, as well as there'll be three others as well. We're unable to cover all the topics, but I refer you to the letter that we sent, um, because it it gives uh all the lists, all the amendments which we find most troubling. So to start with, the um omnibus bylaw you are considering is not bold, rather, in many parts of it, it is regressive. It eliminates many regulations and permit requirements, thus weakening city oversight. And when you're creating a larger, more complex, um, more densely populated city, you need oversight. The purpose of laws such as the zoning bylaw is to ensure a safe, orderly, and peaceful society. By weakening the zoning bylaw, you are eroding the city's ability to ensure developments are done safely, in an orderly manner, and in a way that creates harmony amongst neighbors. Great cities of the world have great laws which are enforced. So let's make sure the city has great laws rather than focusing on eliminating regulations, which a lot of this omnibus does. So for instance, rather than eliminating zoning bylaw regulation forty-five eight in section R of the omnibus amendments, let's strengthen the regulation. Regulation forty-five point eight requires noisy mechanical systems such as air conditioners to be located in the rear yard of sites with a width less than nine meters. Now, this regulation was introduced at the same time the zoning bylaw was being amended to allow for skinny lots. Uh, there was concern about the narrow side setbacks exacerbating existing problems. Many mature neighborhood residents were concerned about noisy air conditioners keeping them awake and blowing hot air into their side yard windows, which they rely on for summer ventilation. In response, regulation forty-five eight was created. Now, Edmond is proposing to eliminate this regulation, and I quote the rationale. Since passing in the 2013, this regulation has not significantly reduced or mitigated issues and disputes arising from nuisances produced by air conditioner units. Hmm, of course, the complaints continued. The problem with the regulation is that it only applied to narrow lots, and as you know, there are many more than narrow lots in the city. So regulation forty-five point eight should remain until a more comprehensive, well-thought-out regulation is adopted. Under certain conditions, often found in new neighborhoods, side yard air conditioners are not a nuisance for the neighbors. Many new homes do not rely on side facade window ventilation. Uh, so we need a more flexible, nuanced regulation um so that you can allow air conditioner side yards when it they wouldn't be a nuisance, but prohibited when they would be a nuisance. So a better regulation is a win for all. The city would save money and time. Three-one-one and community standards bylaw officers would not need to respond to so many complaints about noisy air conditioners and other side yard mechanical systems like our high-efficiency furnace uh furnaces we have now. Um, secondly, property owners with air conditioners would be spared from friction with the neighbors. They would not have to adjust the times they use their air conditioner, or they would not have to incur the expense of actually moving the air conditioner. And then neighbors would win because they could live in harmony with their next-door neighbor. They could get some peace during the day and a good sleep at night and uh even keep their windows open. And they could continue to use window ventilation rather than air conditioners, which is more efficient way of doing things. So it's a win for all. So great laws make great neighbors and a great city. So rather than chucking out all the laws that we can possibly think of, um, that you consider, some people consider low-impact and others think not, um, rather than doing that, let's make sure we create great laws. Um, I think most of what in this omnibus could be sent back to the zoning bylaw renewal team for more work. Honestly, uh, there's a lot to be considered yet, including increasing secondary suites and a garden suites on the same lot. We haven't considered what how are we going to manage parking? How are we going to deal with infrastructure? It is not well thought out. We need to take our time, do it right.
Thank you.
We don't neighbors shouldn't have to fight with each other because we have not created the laws that protect all parties.
We're at we're at the five minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions? Counsel Nack?
Yes, sorry, wrong button. There we are. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Ms. Zubat, for for this. And so I'm curious as to your thoughts, because I I mean, obviously, you have a long history involved in this. Um, you know, when I when I reached out to EFCL yesterday, because I was surprised they hadn't provided feedback, and I just wanted to say like, oh, okay, well, is there a reason you haven't? And and, you know, I was surprised when I got the replies saying like, listen, you know, I'm paraphrasing to a degree, but, you know, we shared this with our members. We didn't hear from most leagues that were handled, including Park Allen, and I think there's one or two others that that reached out. Um, but but it didn't have this widespread concern that, you know, I think about other times we've done changes over the the many years where there's been a much wider spread series of concerns. And so I I guess I wanted to put that to you a bit, which is that it I I'm surprised that if this was as bad as you make it sound, that we wouldn't have had more people involved when when their calls out, when the call went out about the changes. So I wouldn't mind your take. And it doesn't mean this is perfect or that there's not specific changes. I'm just wondering if it's
It has everything to do with the public engagement.
Yeah.
We have not had proper public engagement with this. People do not understand. If you talk to anybody on the street, do you think they know about this? Do you think the leagues even know about this? We were not notified until October that of the omnibus, and that was rushed through. We asked for a little more time. What the city did no more public engagement, no more public engagement, other than say, do you have any questions? And it was over the holidays. And um, so what you're asking of EFCL is to do the public engagement for the city. And all all uh EFCL did was make sure that the leagues had this information. We we spent the civics committee that I'm involved with now in my community. We spent many hours looking through this, and it wasn't after many uh until many hours that some people said, aha, now I get it. Now I understand what these changes mean. People don't get it. If you're not accustomed to dealing with the zoning bylaw, it is very difficult to understand. And EFCL now has a policy not to intervene unless the ju unless there's a majority of people express an interest because, okay, there's a lot of pressure on EFCL not to respond. Let's put it that way.
Okay, no, no, that's that's a I just wanted to to get that take, because I I that is part of my challenge, is that I'm I'm used to, especially early on, when changes were being made, that then there being a lot more conversation, a lot more people reaching out. And and so, you know, what I was trying to ask myself and understand based on sort of the lack of correspondence I had received, was was this in fact a a reasonable set of changes? Not ideal for everyone, but but something that people were generally supportive of, or at least not worried about as much, recognizing that there was a broader set of work coming in the in the overall zoning bylaw renewals. So that's that's been the piece. But but so I I think your point being that although it was shared, that there might not be a full appreciation of how this actually impacts people.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They they don't understand. And it's so much easier to explain these things when you can meet in person. People come together for other reasons, and at the same time, you can explain to them the implications of what's coming forward. Uh, people aren't don't meet the same way as they used to. There's not the same engagement. And the city has not provided a forum to do that in. I know it's difficult. I don't envy the city, but that's why we have to take things slowly. It's critical we take this slow. We do not rush this.
Okay. Uh, those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Zubat? Counsel Walters?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm gonna say, maybe just build in on on that a little bit, because there'll be questions of it then about that for sure. But just in a couple of minutes, trying to, you know, I don't want to use my whole time, but what would have been the right and appropriate engagement process on these bold moves, knowing that they've kind of lifted up the same plan and there has engagement on on the zoning bylaw for one this particular need? So maybe if you were if you were in charge, what would you have done?
Uh, I would, well, if you have to meet, if the only way you can meet is through webinars, like, you know, through video calls, et cetera, then then that's the way you do it. But it requires more than one hour to cover several discussion papers that are very, very complicated. And it requires more than just using the city staff's uh information that's provided to you, for fear that you may, you know, say something wrong if you don't follow it to the T. So it's it's, I think what we need is more uh opportun, more time spent on this. We spent much more time on the M and O, right? Much more time. And this is much more complex and a lot more significant changes being promoted. So um, what did the city do? How many more? How many meetings did the city have with the public? Zero, as far as I know. Maybe I was not informed of them, wasn't aware of them, but I I don't know of any opportunities to actually meet one that the general public could meet with uh and and actually understand the complexity of it.
Sorry, I I appreciate you answering that question, because I know you're familiar with, you know, many years of public engagement on issues like this. So thanks for taking the time. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Zubat? Not seeing any. We'll hear next then from Sharon Bolton.
Ah, good afternoon. I am also with the Park Allen Community League, and I'd like to ask you to reconsider the proposed change to regulation eleven point four, limitation of variance. This proposed change would remove the need for a developer to show unnecessary hardship or practical difficulties peculiar to the use, character, or situation of land or a building. In other words, this change would do away with the developer having to justify the need for a variance and could result in the granting of variances for little or no justifiables. The city has, over the years, implemented many regulations on development which serve to both instruct developers and protect adjoining properties. These regulations serve the purpose of checks and balances, offering assurances to homeowners that proposed new developments will not result in adverse outcomes. Using this reasoning, I feel that variations to these regulations should be granted in only the most exceptional circumstances and should always be brought to the Development Appeal Board in order that affected neighbors have an opportunity to present any valid objections to the proposed variance. Automatic granting of variances removes this opportunity and unfairly tilts the process in favor of the developer. The burden of proof of hardship should be on the applicant, not on the unsuspecting victims of the variance. So what are exceptional circumstances? Currently, the developer must prove hardship. However, nowhere in the bylaw is there a definition of hardship. The notification and variance discussion paper on page nine discusses how other jurisdictions have attempted definitions, and I quote, "One type of hardship is related to physical constraints, which some provinces and territories view as a legitimate reason for a variance." The Yukon government gets clear hardship examples related to practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships due to the exceptional narrowness, shortness, shape, topographic features, or other unusual conditions of the property. Conversely, several provinces indicate that self-imposed constraints to a development that benefit an applicant should not be a consideration for a variance. For example, applicants should not have intentional disregard for the requirements of the regulations. Uh, variances should not create prejudice and advantage for the applicant, or the variance should not be based on a result of the owner's actions or constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the restrictions on neighboring properties. Any bylaw amendment with regret with regard to variations does need to include guidance on the definition of hardship. I agree with the premise that hardship should only be related to the physical attributes of the property in question and not to the developer's financial situation nor caused by any actions of the developer. I have personally heard of several instances where the supposed hardship was based on the developer's ability to make a profit. It's unacceptable that developers' profits should trump the rights of neighboring property owners. The discussion paper further justifies the change, proposed changes in the argument that, well, since the Development Appeal Board approves most requests, there is a question as to whether this is worth the added time and cost to the applicant and the city. This is not an acceptable excuse for automatic granting of variances, as again, it gives advantage to the developer. Any variance from the regulations need to be fully understood by all involved parties, including those who may be disadvantaged by the variance. Perhaps the owners should be on the Development Appeal Board to ensure that there is indeed a hardship as defined in a good bylaw. An interesting footnote here with regard to development appeal, I personally had appealed a variance applied for in an infill next door, and my appeal was denied. I was notified that I had no further appeal recourse. I've recently been made aware, however, of another appeal process where the appellant won, but the developer was allowed to further appeal that ruling. There appears to be a double standard here, again, in favor of the developer. In fairness, the appeal rules should be the same for either party. In conclusion, I feel the proponents of the bylaw changes are losing sight of effects on neighboring property owners. Existing bylaws need to be strengthened, not lessened. Council should wait for the zoning bylaw renewal team to complete their work and bring forward a variance amendment within the planned zoning bylaw renewal process in 2022. There's no need to fast-track a change now. Let's wait and make sure we get it right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Questions? Counsel Henderson?
Yeah, I I just, you know, because I I mean, I have sympathy for your argument, but I just want to clarify some things and get your thoughts on this. The reality is, and this took me a while to figure out, and we fought at this, and we continue to lose this argument, that the test that the S D A B uses is different from our test. The test that S D A B uses makes no reference to hardship whatsoever. It is focused on whether or not there's any negative impact on the neighbor. And 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 I'm And, and, and I'm, and it seems to me there is some value, given that, that we're, we're creating false expectations by having a tougher test in our bylaw than the STAB is being instructed to do by the province. Can't change it. Um, and it, and it, and it creates, it creates this confusion and misunderstanding that the appeal board is using a different test than the original um, decision maker. And so, you know, it seems to me that the advantage of, of, of having this variance power is precisely to protect the neighbor, and that that should be the test. Should be whether or not it's negatively affecting the neighbor, and not whether or not there's a hardship to the owner. I'd prefer that to be the test. And, and this lines it up with that, and hopefully will create some better expectations and some more alignment with what STAB is doing. So thoughts about that?
Um, yes, I think that, you know, that being the case, and that is very unfortunate, then maybe the bylaw should be amended to define, um, to better define, I guess you could say, what are the reasons for granting a variance, and what are the reasons for not granting a variance? Right now, it really doesn't say an awful lot about anything. So I think it, it needs to be further fleshed out a little bit.
Well, I'll ask questions about that. I, I, I think it, I think it's clear, and I think it is very clear in the STAB's, in the STAB's purview, and it really is, it's an adjudication of whether or not there's a negative effect on the neighbors, quite frankly. And, and I think that is the real test we want, we want our variances to have. If there's, someone's asking for a variance that has, that everybody's okay with, I don't know why you'd say no. Um, I do think you need to protect the neighbor, and I think that's why the appeal system's set up, and that's the test I would hope that our development officers are using as well, in saying yes or no to a variances. Is the neighbor going to be negatively affected? I think, and I'm hearing from you that that's what you'd like to see as well. This is about the protection of the neighbor. Correct? That's the most, that's the major thing we have, we have to uphold here.
Absolutely. And I know that in my personal case, that was not taken into consideration.
Fair enough. And that's, and, and, and you know, at, at ST, I can't speak to STAB. I have been fighting this for years. We tried to get some changes to the city charter and got nowhere. So, um, and, and, and the reality is, and I think, I'm, I'm just guessing, I don't know in the case of somebody, the only, the only way to appeal an STAB, we have no ability to appeal our STAB ruling. The only way to appeal an STAB ruling is to go to the Court of Queen's Bench. Um, so our rulings can always be appealed to STAB. Um, but they're the final, they're, unless you can come up with a legal argument, so I'm, I'm guessing, I mean, just to give you some assurance about what's happening there, that rule is pretty, pretty fiercely adhered to, and I've known communities go to, to, to Court of Queen's Bench, and I suspect there have been applicants that have gone to Court of Queen's Bench as well. But that's the only way for an STB ru, or ruling, and we've gone to the Court of Queen's Bench in the past for some of ours, so anyway.
The Court of Appeal, uh, Counselor Henderson?
Court of Appeal, sorry, um, my mistake. Being corrected by the legal beagles. So anyway, thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Bolton? Okay, then next we'll hear from Diane Forbes.
Uh, good afternoon. I would like to start by saying thank you for this opportunity to voice my concerns over the proposed big move zoning text amendments. They're before council. I'm Diane Forbes, and I'm a member of the Park Allen Community League. So in 2016, when I was planning my move to Edmonton, I became aware of the residential infill initiative. It, along with the rain garden pilot project, were two projects which were of great interest to me. And having lived in Vancouver for roughly 15 years, I was aware of their uh, ongoing densification efforts, including the resulting benefits and negative side effects. And I would actually like to, um, thank, uh, the presenters for the, uh, on the pro side, because they've actually outlined fairly clearly some of my following concerns. I was attracted to the infill roadmap because, um, my husband and I were interested in potentially building a garden suite, and this helped to inform our choice of a home, our neighborhood, the lot, um, a number of other considerations, the price point. Unfortunately, the clarity as to what redevelopment was possible on my property at that time, and its relative value, has continuously eroded over time due to the significant number of changes to the zoning bylaw in intervening year, in intervening years. Apparently, there were 65 amendments made in 2017 and 18 alone, a number of which related directly to infill. So the proposed changes before council today add yet a further level of uncertainty as to what could be developed on my lot, or my neighbor's lots, and doubt as to the value of my renovation plans. These changes thus present a real material interest to me. And I think, you know, again, looking at the various permutations and, uh, potential built forms that could be considered under a continuously expanding and unconsidered zoning bylaw are great and diverse. And I don't think that necessarily I might have chose the house that I had chosen to buy if I had thought that I could be living, or I would have preferred to pay less to live next to an apartment building, which is potentially what could be built next to me in the coming years, per Mayor Iverson's observation, that some of these forms don't necessarily, they are distinguished by name, but not necessarily by appearance or by density. So I'm opposed to council approving the big moves amendments for three main reasons. The first is that they run, they may create conditions that run counter to major points of City of Edmonton policy C551, Residential Infill Immature Neighborhoods, particularly development that is welcomed by neighbors and protects a critical mass of single-family housing in the core of mature neighborhoods. Secondly, they introduce potential risks that are not sufficiently balanced by benefits. Due to a perceived rush to change the existing zoning bylaw in advance of the much more broadly considered process being undertaken by the zoning bylaw renewal initiative, I see no proposed changes in the, uh, big moves text amendments that are so urgent that they cannot be deferred for consideration within the renewal initiative and its related public consultation processes. Third, should there be concerns, there are other means for managing any perceived shortfalls in internal performance reporting uh, on behalf of the City of Edmonton with respect to this initiative. Given that the City of Edmonton has been meeting, if not exceeding, its milestones as reported in the audit of 2018, these changes appear unwarranted. Advocating responsibility to continue carrying out prior activities uh, in, is not a, sorry. Advocating responsibility to continue carrying out prior activities is not a valid method for improving the effectiveness of services, in my opinion. Recognizing that those factors outside of council's control have changed in economic sense uh, does not equate to a failure by the city to achieve infill objectives. So current resident homeowners like myself, i.e. non-speculative homeowners, people who own a home and live in their home and intend to stay in their home for a period of time, are facing a risk that is large, a risk to their largest single purchase and the asset of many's. The bold move changes proposed by the zoning bylaw, proposed to the zoning bylaw, are increasingly creating game of chance conditions for owners like me to be winners or losers of infill. I am concerned that the time and care necessary is not being taken to see that the benefits to residents outweigh their risks as the city moves towards its ultimate infill objectives, and increases density in its core, mature, and established neighborhoods. Think it's important to point out that while a policy change or bylaw reversal is easily made, a poorly considered development next door will stand for generations.
Thank you, Ms.
The uncertainty of 2020 into 2021 behooves an increased
Ms. Forbes?
Level of caution, not lessened.
Thank you. We're at the five minutes. Thank you. Um, questions for Ms. Forbes? Not seeing any. Thank you for those comments. And did we have, uh, yes, Jan Hartstaff, last but not least, uh, speaking on 3.6. Jan, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A July 2015 document, Strengthening Public Engagement in Edmonton, describes engagement as an important part of the decision-making process, stating, "Engagement by ordinary citizens supplies a democracy and a political system. Without them, city government is dominated by officials, experts, and lobbyists." The engagement preceding the presentation of these zoning bylaw amendments today excluded meaningful engagement input from citizens and communities in which infill is being built. Administration's report acknowledges these amendments are being brought to council with a significantly different level and extent of engagement. Uh, citizens and civil society must be provided equitable engagement opportunities. EFCL was not engaged prior to the October 27 Urban Planning Committee meeting. Leagues were not engaged outside being provided with multiple lengthy discussion papers for the, involving the zoning bylaw renewal initiative and the zoning bylaw omnibus report attachments, which invited us to provide feedback only outside significant engagement with industry, which informed the engagement process. The June 4, 2019 Residential Infill Audit states, "City council acts as a decision-maker for the city, setting expectations by providing direction and approving policy changes. One of council members' roles as elected officials is to act as the voice for their constituents and stakeholders. The question must be asked, have the voices of your constituents been heard? And do these amendments equitably serve all stakeholders?" In my view, the answer is no. In an election year, taxpaying citizens who own homes in your wards are looking for equitable representation from their elected officials, our city's mayor and council. They need you to ensure public engagement is equitable, and that decisions made on their behalf protect their interests and mitigate risk of impact and damage to their property. A resident from Crestwood states, "As a citizen and taxpayer, we want a fair and equitable process. We need to trust the city's elected officials and administration are fulfilling their responsibilities to all citizens. Our homes are our biggest investment. The city's rules must adhere to the highest quality of building development and engineering standards. These regulations must be complied with by builders and enforced by the city." So now I'll get down to some of the proposed amendments. Um, the Amendment to Regulation 11.4, removing the requirement for applicants to show unnecessary hardship when applying for variances. Uh, the solution being proposed is to give power to the DO to approve the variance and save the applicant time and city resources. This is about project management and, and addressing some of the risks outlined in the infill roadmap. There is another way to save time for the applicant and city resources, require compliance with the zoning bylaw, and class A permit requirements. If only in per variances that are justified, this will result in greater development certainty for neighbors. Amendment 6.1, to exclude decks between 1.1 meter and 1.8 meters in height from the calculation of site coverage, will allow a larger building envelope, but the deck is still covering the site. This should be included. We still don't know what the maximum site coverage may look like in the future. Under the residential zone discussion papers, there's a little bit of lack of clarity. But existing maxims would allow up to 58%, which is a 40% increase to current site coverages under the MNO. And this increase in site coverage will increase stormwater runoff and decrease the area for absorptive green landscaping. And the result will be greater impact on our city's drainage infrastructure and reduced future climate resiliency. These 1.8 meter high decks and the platforms being suggested to be excluded if they're up to 1.2 meters in the rear and side setback also impact neighbors by reducing privacy and increasing noise. Amendments to the Regulation 50.3.5, uh, reducing the setback from 0.9 to 0.6 meters from the interior side lot lines would allow garages to be two feet from the property line on both sides. This would prevent accessibility for wheelchairs, walkers, bicycles, larger people, and may also restrict access if a firefighter was required to get in there. It also does not consider how internal drainage rails will be provided to ensure stormwater is conveyed to the city right of way. There is just no room, and it is possible water could even get under the garage lap and cause damage from settlement or frosteding. Please make the right decision. Do not approve these amendments. They require more robust engagement to get right. Send these amendments back to administration to include in the zoning bylaw renewal engagement process. We also ask that you request a review of the current engagement process to ensure broader representation of citizens and civil society leading up to the new zoning bylaw in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Hartstaff? Counselor Henderson?
Maybe I'm just, I just, you know, reading, and I'll ask some questions about this, but I'll go from what my understanding of the changes is here, and I'm struggling with a little bit. I'm, you know, in terms of the site coverage question, um, I'm struggling to imagine, in terms of drainage and all those kinds of things, why the difference of 1 meters versus 1.8 meters for what would be a permeable deck, I presume, why adding an extra 0.8 meters is going to make a difference to some of the issues that you're raising. I can understand how it might make a difference to overlook and things like that, but not to the site coverage question. Whether a deck's 1 meter higher or 1.8 meters high, I'm not sure how it would affect site coverage. Thoughts?
Well, it seems that they're trying to, um, reserve the site coverage for the building.
Yeah.
But also provide a connection between an interior and exterior living space.
Um, yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is, right now, right now, if it was 1 meter, yeah, right now, if it's 1 meter or less, it's not considered part of site coverage. So all we're doing is change, saying now if it's 1.8 meters or less, it's not part of site coverage. So, I mean, the concern you're raising is about a deck period. This is just about, about a slight change to the height of the deck that would allow it to be included. Anything over 1.8 meters is going to still be included as part of site coverage. That's my understanding of the change.
So, so the law, your, your logic is, is sound there, for sure. I mean, decks are decks. It doesn't matter how high they are. Um, but decks do add to site coverage. They add to curviness of the lot. And what's actually being allowed, I think, what I see actually the potential in some of the residential, under the residential zone discussion paper, is for site coverage to be pushed 40% more than what it already is. I mean, I don't think most people who live in these areas for infills being built have any idea what that would look like. I actually have done some three-dimensional drawings. I, I asked for administration to provide me with some uh, three, three-dimensional mockups, and they didn't want to get into that kind of detail with me. But I have actually done, done some mockup drawings, and they are quite a bit more intensive. And so, um, the other thing, though, is overlook. Uh, you know, these decks having a depth 1.8 meters, it means if the spence is 1.8 meters higher, you're going to be looking right over into your neighbor's amenity area, and I suppose there could be screening and all kinds of things, but you know, I just think that there, it seems that industry just wants more and larger buildings so that they can have what we've heard today, eight units on a lot. I just think that's, there needs to be more thought about all of the other implications and impact.
Absolutely agree. I'm just trying to, you know, in terms of what's being put in front of us today, understand, you know, I, I, there may be a perfectly valid argument to say that decks should not be, should be considered part of site coverage, but that's not what we're being asked to change today.
No, and actually, what, what, so, but really in some ways, I mean, honestly, the, the actual amendments, I have problems with quite a few of them. The process is my biggest problem, though. I was not, we were not asked for, for input here until, until we, we have to go to Urban Planning Committee. We get a few days to read a lengthy report and amendments. And because of the fact that some of the background from some of the people on our civics committee allowed us to actually analyze some of these things, most communities, most, uh, residents and citizens in the city have no idea how to understand any of this. And so I think that what's happening here is that there's just, there's not an equitable engagement process that's providing opportunity for people to provide feedback and make sure that this is done right. The zoning bylaw, as Bev said, has had far less engagement opportunities than the mature neighborhood overlay had. And that's all, it, it's all at risk of being eliminated. So I just think that this needs to have a more robust engagement process. You don't want to make mistakes here. We need to make sure that the zoning bylaw serves the interests of all stakeholders and all citizens.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Hartstaff? Seeing none. Thank you to all of the speakers. We'll turn now, uh, based in part on your input, to questions of administration, starting with Counselor Henderson.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, well, first, just to do double check back, I mean, in, in, in terms of the conversation about doing anything more, uh, adding, allowing, you know, up, up-down duplexes to have secondary suites, that would have, there's, that's a big enough change. It would have to be re-advertised, correct?
That's correct.
So if we're interested in exploring that, probably a subsequent motion is the way to go.
You're correct, Counselor Henderson.
And just to add to that, Counselor Henderson, um, that's exactly what we're exploring through the zoning bylaw renewal, so that's all part of the work to come in the coming months.
Um, I'm a little bit, I, I am a bit interested in this question of, of, um, of the air conditioners, because I remember when we put it in, and I remember why we put it in. So what kind of, if we take it out now, what kind of protections there will be, will there be? Because I, because it is, there's no question it's an issue, and I, and I just, are we gonna? leave ourselves without any kind of tools to be able to respond and deal with this?
So the issue is often around noise, and our community standards bylaws, what is how we can, the tool we can use to follow up around noise complaints.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't answer the question when this came up a number of years ago, which is why we put this in. So this may not be the right tool either, but I think, but I think we'd be naive to think that there isn't an issue here that needs to be dealt with.
And it's something we can, you know, look at as, in the coming year, when we're working through the zoning bylaw renewal, if there are issues that are coming up that can't be dealt with using that particular tool, the community standards bylaw as it relates to noise, we do have the opportunity through the zoning bylaw renewal to address it there. And so a lot of these changes, we'll be looking to sort of test the innovation and the outcomes of the bylaw changes, and if we need to pivot through the zoning bylaw renewal, we can definitely bring that back.
Well, and it may not be zoning. It may be something else we need to look at. You know, if we're going to take it out here, I might be inclined to do a subsequent about that, because I think just erasing it and not flagging this as an issue, I think, is an error. Whether or not we have the right answer is a different question. Because I realize this may be too blunt a tool to actually fix what the real problem is. But I, and I'm not sure it's a zoning, it may not be a zoning bylaw problem.
Yeah, and technology is changing with air conditioning units as well, so they're becoming less noisy, but definitely we can-
If you spend more money, you can get them quieter. If you don't spend money, they're going to be loud, right?
Right.
Okay. And then, and then just to explore some of the other things, you know, the reality is in terms of the, in terms of the, well, just actually, let's talk a little, a little bit about, I know this came up at committee, but this whole question of the variance. So what will the test be now? Because there will still be a test for whether or not a development officer is prepared to give a variance. They would not give a variance if there was, if it was deemed to be detrimental to the neighbors, correct?
So, Counselor, the test for the development officer will continue to be the unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood and materially interfere with or affect the use and enjoyment and value of neighboring properties. So that test will remain in the bylaw, and then-
And is still there, is still clear, is still clean, or as clear and clean as it's ever been?
That's correct. It remains.
So, and that, and that will now be the major intent, and that will be the test, not whether or not a hardship can be shown. So anybody can ask, but if the neighbor's going to be negatively affected, the answer will be no, and their obligation will be to say no. Correct?
So the hardship test as being an additional gate to pass will no longer be there if the bold moves is passed today.
And the hardship test never existed at SDB, which is why we've had so many situations where we've said no, or had to say no, and knowing full well that SDB was likely to overturn it, correct?
Correct. Your analysis about the unduly interfere with and that tested SDB is correct.
Yeah, yeah. And then just to clarify a couple of the other things that came up, so the, the question of the decks is now, we're now saying, and I'm trying to imagine, at one point, I have to confess, a 1.8 meter deck feels pretty high to me. What's our maximum fence height? It's barely more than 2 meters, 2 or 3 meters?
I think 1.8 without a development permit, and then anything higher, you need a development permit, but I'll just pass-
No, no, it's 1.2 without a development permit.
1.2, sorry.
Sorry, that's a whole different issue. 1.2, and I understand that. So you no longer, for the, for the, for the deck that's virtually ground level, you don't need to pull a development permit anymore. That, that's, I think, a whole nother issue. But we're, but, but I'm trying to imagine why we're going to 1.8, so anything over 1.8, and it would become part of, it would become part of the site coverage, correct?
Correct.
Right now, anything over 1, and it becomes part of the site coverage?
Correct.
So, and I'm just trying to think of that in relationship to what our maximum fence height is, which I think would be one of the, you know, which was, would be one of the things, one of the reasons why site coverage is important, because it has to do with how much wall and how much, you know, how much building there is next door to a neighbor.
I'll just pass it over to the team to follow up.
Thank you. So where we arrived at with the 1.8 meters was, it was a function of, what is the height of your front door in a typical home, right? So when you've got your garage protruding from the grade, it's about that many feet up to the threshold of your doorway. So the intent was, the most common entryway decks that you see are right level with your front door. And that was how we arrived at that number.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Nack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to just spend some time, if you wouldn't mind, going over the engagement pieces here. I know there's a bit referenced in the, in the report. Can you just walk me through, sort of in detail, how, how you reached out to different groups beyond industry? I appreciate there's, there's an industry piece, and they've had their opportunity, but whether it's EFCL, whether it's other communities, how did we go about that?
So, doing the zoning, the work around the zoning bylaw omnibus, we recognized in terms of responding to the COVID impacts and aligning our services and supporting businesses, and also further supporting City Plan in terms of the gentle density that some of the bold moves can support. We drew the engagement heard through City Plan and Connect Edmonton, but we did follow up with, as you noted, industry and the Edmonton Federation of Community Leagues earlier in October. Of course, we had the Urban Planning Committee meeting in October, and as a follow-up to that, we did follow up with communications to provide clarification. And again, public hearing is an opportunity for, for public input. But I'll just maybe pass it to the team if there's anything more specific they wanted to add.
Thanks, Kim. Yeah, I would just add that, in addition to those common touchpoints, one, one of the points of engagement that we undertook with this was leveraging our day-to-day touchpoints, Counselor Nack, with our permit service users, as well as people that are inquiring about permits. So people that are calling to inquire the development officer about, you know, a variance or something that they've received a notification on. Those are regular points of contact that we have that are tangibly tied to specific issues, and so that was somewhat of an innovation in terms of how we approached engagement. It wasn't the conventional open house that we're used to doing, but that was our approach.
So the, so if I understand, just to make sure I've fully gone through this all, and is that, you know, we've been doing engagement on a lot of different city topics, particularly within this department over the last number of years. And so your perspective, and I think this is touched on in your presentation, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, which is that through all of this engagement, you have tried to highlight different things. There are issues that might be, you might have viewed as, as a little more contentious than others. You've tried to pull out some of those, not, not without contention items, but, but ones that maybe you felt could be advanced here today, whereas the bigger and the most contentious items are the ones that you're going to spend time on through the zoning bylaw renewal. So if I'm sort of like putting this on a, on a scale here, you know, what we just moved were the simple things, nobody was really worried about that. This is the one that you expected that there might be some pushback, but there hasn't been widespread citywide pushback through the different engagement that we've been doing citywide on City Plan on different issues. Is that a fair description?
Yes, Counselor Nack, that's, that's accurate. And to be clear, the zoning bylaw renewal project is ongoing over the course of 2021, and we are committed to engaging through that process as well, so, but no, that's a concise summary.
Well, I wasn't very concise, but that's okay. The, the other question then is, and I think you said this, or hinted to this on, on the deck piece, but just more broadly, the changes that are being proposed today, if they were to proceed, we're still going to watch over the next, well, really, year, year and a half prior to the zoning bylaw renewal work come back, or around the same time as the zoning bylaw renewal work will come back. So that if we find, find that there are unintended consequences that are severe, we would make that change when that work comes back, correct?
Absolutely. We will continue to examine how the changes are working. We're doing further study and research and engagement on, on the zoning bylaw as a whole, as you know, and so absolutely, if there are changes that we have proposed here today that are not working, we will be following up on those.
And I purposely use the word severe, because I do want to ask that, again, the intent and the thinking was that the changes you're proposing today, ideally, you've thought through all the risks, potential permeable limitations, combinations of how something might not work out exactly as intended. And, and is, would it be your sort of submission that the changes here, even if something didn't go quite the way you had hoped, aren't going to be substantial or substantially negative to somebody, that they might, they might be an inconvenience, that's something we might need to work on, but you're sort of viewing these as a level of risk and not as high of a risk of something significant happening?
Yeah, I recognize, you know, change is hard, and when we talk about infill and the impact that it can have to communities, we, we understand that. So we want to, we're continuing to think about how we can better communicate with residents and property owners about the change that's happening in their communities. You know, City Plan is our, our tool that we're, or the policy direction that we're trying to implement, and so most definitely, there, there is some level of risk that there is unintended consequences, but I feel that it's minimal.
Okay, I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Walters? Actually, we're at, hold on, just realized we're at 3:30 right now, but a question to the group of whether you want to take the break, because we've only got a couple more speakers, or whether you want to power through.
I'm happy to power through.
Folks good to power through? No objections to that?
Yes.
All right, then let's just make it formal with a motion to-
I'll move it. We extend until we can be again.
Yeah, second. Thank you. I'll just seek unanimous consent on that. There's no objection. Not hearing any, then carry on, Counselor Walters, with questions.
Thanks, and Counselor Nack asked other questions I was going to ask about engagement, so thank you for doing that. And then just one more, Ms. Petron, as it relates to any concerns with, you know, site coverage and lot drainage, maybe just a comment on that. You know, I know the issue came up a bit in, in referring to the site coverage issue with 6.1, under the general definitions, but maybe just some commentary on how these changes were contemplated in relation to thinking about lot drainage.
So part of the, the supporting it business aspect of, of the decks is it allows that it, the site coverage issue allows development that might be happening, or a proposal for a single-family home that's considered in a different municipality can be, same floor plate can be proposed here. But when it comes to lot grading, the grading still needs to be managed and maintained as per our bylaw regardless of the height of the deck. And so we will still apply the same standards.
Kind of this changes any of that, is basically what you're saying. So Counselor Nack's question about, you know, if something's not working well, you know, there's opportunities down the road to change it. And considering the number of changes that we've made to these kinds of regulations over the years, is there an example of something that we've noted hasn't been working well that we've made adjustments on, that you or anyone in your team could think of off the top of your head that would be instructive about our willingness to, to do that?
Nothing's coming to the top of my mind here, but I'll just look to the team if there's anything anyone would add.
I'll just add, Counselor, regularly, when we make changes to the zoning bylaw, we realize over the course of time that there are certain elements of the bylaw that aren't working. For some larger changes, we come back with a one-year check-in, that kind of thing, to make some, make some changes. That would be the, and usually those changes are identified by applicants, residents, that type of thing, as we live with those changes for a while, so that would be the type of thing I would anticipate.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Sorry, I thought I saw someone go off mute.
I have maybe one example, the RA9 zone. We made some changes to the RA9 zone, and I think we came back further to that after the, for first round of implementing that, to make some tweaks to kind of pivot to allow the, the zone to work more efficiently.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, as, as we shift through this stuff, and, you know, I know engagement wasn't perfect. I don't think we would suggest it was either, noting the restrictions that we've all been living with the past while. But even if engagement was as robust and everybody was here celebrating the robustness of it, we would still need processes in place and a culture to be able to check back in on things that are, are significant changes. So I just, you know, maybe for everyone's benefit, Ms. Petron, just talk a little bit about the, the process specifically through which you review new, you know, changes, new regulations, how you evaluate them, and, and then how you would bring them back to us if, if changes did need to be made. That's all I had, so I'll leave, I'll leave you to answer that.
Yeah, there's a number of things that we look at, you know, the frontline staff in terms of their interactions with the bylaw, our customers, the number of variances that we issue or don't issue as it relates to the bylaw changes. We, we consider what kind of changes might come before council through a public hearing, through a direct control, and we, we listen and we learn from those, those pieces to better inform zoning bylaw changes that we'll capture through the zoning bylaw renewal over the course of the year. And so, as we have discussed previously related to the zoning bylaw renewal, we've just worked through all of the discussion papers on various, various topics. We'll continue to, you know, study a few elements that we need to study out of that, continue to research, and of course, engagement is a really important part of that. So we'll be on, that work will be ongoing to inform what the zoning bylaw looks like when we come back to council.
So I thought the, so I guess I do have one more, since you brought up the discussion papers. Those were fairly rich and fairly lengthy. Can you describe the kind of response, the level of feedback that you got back to those discussion papers?
Yeah, sure. We've got, I can't quote you off the top of my head numbers, but, but we have got a really healthy response from a range of different stakeholders, citizens, community groups, development, industry. And I would say that, you know, it's natural for people to want to go to a higher degree of detail than we're ready to engage at at this particular time. It was putting forward some kind of course ideas around the proposed directions we would take. This next phase of engagement that we're about to embark on will be more detailed as we get into the actual writing of the regulations and move away from the big ideas kinds of things. So the Engage Edmonton platform in particular has given us an opportunity for, for a pretty widespread engagement on this, with, with all things considered in terms of our COVID pandemic limitations.
Okay, thank you for those. Thanks, everybody. That's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor Essinger.
Thank you, and I'll start with engagement as well. And from what I heard from my communities, they're saying, we're working from home, we have our kids, some are at school, some are not, and they're feeling overwhelmed, so to give that in, input is challenging at this time, but we're in a process, and they'll have other opportunities as we go forward. That's what I've heard today as we do the renewal, correct?
That's correct, Counselor Essinger.
The noise, I think I heard that from my communities as well, I'll be interested in that subsequent. I heard about concerns about variance. The one that wasn't mentioned or we haven't discussed yet was the idea that we weren't going to be advertising in the newspaper. My understanding, that's not about trying not to let people know what's happening, but looking at different ways to communicate better, and we'd be trying different things over time. Am I correct, or I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct. We are looking at establishing more effective means of communication and being able to better increase the outreach for sharing information about development permit information. So we will continue to use the, the journal or the newspaper approach until we establish a communication plan to transition interested residents to a different means of communication.
Thank you, and I think that's what people really want, is to know that we are able to hear them, and they're notified, so I appreciate that. All my questions have been answered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're most welcome. Counselor Benga?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The first one would be in relation to, and most of the speakers, even the one that were for the changes, they expressed concern that there was, most of, this should be approved without those smaller changes. Could you tell me what's the urgency in approving the rest of the, the stuff here and then leaving just a little bit for the, for later on?
So Counselor Benga, the proposed changes within the bold moves bylaw, I'll call it, is really to support businesses and development, to make it easier to invest in our city. We're looking to enable vibrancy and better, or sooner, implement City Plan in terms of the gentle density opportunities within communities, as well as being able to provide excellent service- service to our customers and help to streamline the process and make it easier to do business with us.
Okay, and then we did talk about unintended consequences. Would you tell me, but they would be on the go-forward basis, wouldn't they be?
Yes, that would be if council approved the bylaw changes and we found a development had a, there was, you know, something unintended consequence happened as a result of a development, we'd want to be able to follow up and look at how we would maybe make changes to the bylaw to better respond to an unintended consequences in the future.
Okay, so the variances that would be allowed during, that I guess unintended consequences finding era, would, would they be not forming the case law in this case?
So, Councilor Benga, I don't think that an issuance of a variance particularly creates a precedence. I think that if a variance is granted, there's certainly an opportunity for a neighbor to appeal to the SDAB, but I don't see it as precedent setting.
Okay, and my last question, even though I think a couple of speakers asked this question already, I'm still having difficulty understanding that. What is the rationale for 1.8 meters rather than 1 meter uncovered deck or?
Mr. Shamchuk, I'll let you answer that, please.
So, Councilor Benga, the intention with increasing the height from 1 meters to 1.8 meters, in our analysis of the data, what we found is the vast, vast majority of the front entrance steps that you see to a home or the back of a home, they tend to be at around that height, because the 1.8 meters is about the height at which the top of your foundation would end and the beginning of your first floor would begin. So that's the rationale for the difference in 1.0 to 1.8 meters.
Okay. All right, what about the provincial, I guess, safety code that 1.1 meter, some are covered under the, under the height restrictions, some are not. Is that within our jurisdiction to make sure that is complied with, or we have nothing to do with it?
You know, regardless of what the zoning bylaw says, the codes will require that any elevated platforms be treated safely, and that may require that they have railings if they're over a certain height. The code is the code, and it could be the case that someone needs to apply for a building permit in these scenarios to obtain that. What we're doing here is we're essentially saying, you know, this element of safety is regulated through the safety codes, as you've noted. Is it necessary to also regulate it through the zoning bylaw? And I think our analysis demonstrated out that it wasn't effective and it wasn't necessary, given that the safety issues are regulated through the building permit process.
Okay, and my last question is about, again, variance there. Whom job does it become to, I guess, demonstrate that this is a necessary or unnecessary hardship? How would you, how would we define that?
So, Councilor, under the previous test, there was a bit of commentary with the rule that talked about the particular shape or something that was unique to a particular lot that created a hardship. So that was something that the developer, the development officer would exercise the discretion on to determine if the hardship test was met. Of course, if the bold moves goes forward and the hardship test is removed, the development officer will be guided by the same language that the SDAB uses in determining if a variance should be granted.
Okay, so if my neighbor decides to build something that is actually a hardship for myself, then what would be, what would be the, like, do I have any say in it? Or do I have to spend all the time, I guess, defending or proving myself that this is hardship for me rather than for them?
So, to clarify, Councilor, the hardship test would have been with respect to the parcel of land that the development permit would have applied to, and not necessarily the neighbors' parcels of land. But to your question, if there was, you know, a material impact to a neighboring parcel, that neighbor would have the opportunity to appeal any Class B development permit to the SDAB.
And it does not change from now to then? Basically, we have the same thing, neighbor.
Councilor, you're.
Is any with, with, I guess, certain development.
Councilor, we're into undue hardship now on the time.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, Ms. Inkpen, if you want to respond to the question where it's at, though.
So, Councilor, I don't think that the, sorry, if you don't mind, could you just repeat the question? I do understand that you're a bit over time, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay, just for clarity and so that we don't need another round. If you want to put the question as crisply as you can, Councilor.
Yes. So basically, when, you know, somebody is facing hardship, let's say a developer goes, contractor says, you know, this is the hardship in adjusting this structure, and then what is my avenue if my neighbor does that and I don't agree with that? I wouldn't even be noted, sent a notice about it, would I?
Yeah, in that instance, where we would be applying the current hardship test, that would be under the guise of a variance and a Class B development permit, which would go out on notices to the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks a lot. Sorry for the undue hardship.
That's all good, as long as, as long as your question is answered, Councilor. Councilor Henderson, if you could take the chair.
I will.
So, the, there's two separate issues here around the, the platform structures, what do we call them, projections. So, I heard the argument, Mr. Shamchuk, that it's more around the front entrances that are coming all the way up to, porches essentially, that are coming all the way up to the height of the footing, and that that's up to 1.8 meters. And is that, is that because we've got slope issues, so it doesn't really look like six feet, but if you measure it corner to corner, lot grade, technically it ends up being closer to the six feet? Because that seems, that seems high to me, but are we, are we running into that a fair bit? Or what's, what's driving that six-foot height? Because that just seems a little high.
Sure, yeah, it was a minute to go off mute there. No, it is a function of those higher, higher basements, deep, higher, higher foot basements, resulting in greater projection. It's a function of also the grade, as you referenced, in that the height is measured a certain distance back from the grade, or from the edge of the foundation, pardon me.
Or corner to corner, whatever the grade measurement is, yeah. So, and on sloping sites, that can get really tricky too, which I think we run into from time to time. So if this simplifies that for front entrances, I think that makes sense. But does this then uncork, you know, folks potentially building very large decks or platform structures in backyards or side yards at heights that start to create overlook issues? Or are there other regulations that would kick in to cover those issues for, for larger back decks, say?
Yeah, so we were very mindful of the fact that, you know, allowing taller platform structures in the manner that we've proposed would have potential implications to privacy concerns. And I, I think we've tried to be clear in identifying that that is a bit of a trade-off, frankly, that's being made here. But what gave us confidence to advance with that recommendation is that the other regulations of the bylaws, such as the mature neighborhood overlay, continue to regulate screening, especially when, you know, you have developments in close proximity to one of those mature established neighborhoods.
And you would still need a permit for one that was 1.8 meters off the ground, if I read this correctly? So you would still need to go through some kind of process for a very, very large deck that would allow all of those other mitigations elsewhere in the bylaw to kick in?
That's right, and so to avoid, you know, confusing this with another amendment that relates to exempting platforms from permits, what this is about is exempting it from the calculation for your square footage total. That's what that taller one's about.
But if that is, if that in essence, in sense or uncorks them, that might be an unintended consequence that's captured elsewhere by the permit requirement if it's high enough off the ground, notwithstanding the other change. If it's low, you don't.
These would be part of the review of the overall development, and what's essentially changing is where it sits in the table of, does this contribute to site coverage or not? Those other elements are contemplated through the development review, as you referenced.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to play that out a little bit. And then the, the other, and I guess this is just more process confirmation, if there was a will from members of council to look at these secondary suite and configuration issues, I think we've heard that that's part of the ongoing zoning bylaw review. But I take it administration would not recommend referral of this to, until such time as that work is complete, but would rather either allow that to unfold or look for a subsequent motion if council wanted more information on that. And your recommendation, just want to test, would be to carry on with this.
That's correct.
In the meantime. And that any such amendment as proposed would trigger re-advertising and would create timeline issues for the rest of these red tape cuts and other measures that are before us here.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to be crystal clear. I'll take the chair back from Councilor Henderson.
It's all yours.
Then I don't see any other questions of administration, so at this point, I'll check for new information. Whether there's any new information that's arisen during the public hearing.
Yes, I have new information.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Zubat.
If I remember correctly, and intend to correct me if I am wrong, but I think if you have a 1.2-meter deck, the proposal is you do not need a permit, is that right?
If it's below, if it's below that.
And how do you handle the screening from a five-foot deck? I mean, you know, a high deck like that, do you, is there something, there's nothing in place to, that if you don't require a permit, there's no, there's no oversight? So how are you dealing with screening in that case? That would be my question, is, but I, my, I guess the information I would like to add is that there is no oversight, so you wouldn't require screening for those high decks. So that is an issue, a major issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Zubat on the new information? Not seeing any.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't know this process, so I don't exactly know what constitutes new information, but I would just like to say that I think that the administration staff have made a very good point of reinforcing my statement, which is, things could go ahead, which will become enduring infrastructure and enduring housing stock, which could ultimately be not what was intended, and those are going to be errors in a process or have the potential to be errors in a process which are longstanding, which is my original point of caution.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Forbes on that? Not seeing any. Is there any other new information?
Not to elaborate too much further on the deck issue, but the mature neighborhood overlay, the maximum height for basement elevation is 1.5 meters. So why then are we talking about increasing deck height to where you walk into the front door or out the back door to 1.8 meters? I'm not entirely sure I understand why we're going to 1.8 meters here. Unless there's, there's just, you know, there's not, you're not including the information from the mature neighborhood overlay in this discussion, and we're already beyond the mature neighborhood overlay in this discussion?
Yeah, new information's not really a Q and A, but, but I understand that those are questions that have arisen for you from the discussion, which are fair to flag. So, Councilor Henderson's indicating he'll ask a few follow-up questions of administration based on the new information here. But you've got a few more minutes, Jan, if there's anything else you want to add.
Well, the only other thing I wanted to add is, is there really hasn't been any discussion or conversation about the reduction of the side setback to accessory buildings from 0.9 to 0.6 meters, and all of the access problems that that will result in. And I think from even just a fire safety point of view, if you have to exit the rear of a building and you can't get out beside the garage, you can't get out to the lane, I'm just, I'm just thinking that there's, there's, there's some real problems here with, with putting something on a lot where it has to, it has physical implications, it's more than just a plan. It's, it has to work in the real world. So could there be further questions to administration about the rear, the reduction in setback or accessory buildings?
Thank you. I just, I'm going to check to see if there's any other new information before I go to Councilor Henderson to ask a few clarifying questions. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Henderson.
Yeah, I had had the same, so in the mature neighborhood, anywhere where the MNO applied, the max, you know, the, you, the reality is, I suppose, you could still apply for 1.8 meters, but it would be above the level of your front door or your back door, which would raise all sorts of other questions, because this doesn't override the MNO in terms of the maximum 1.5 meters, correct?
That's correct.
But it would allow, it would allow for someone in the MNO to have a deck that aligned with their main floor without using up the yard space, correct?
Yes.
So the 1.8 meters is because it applies as well to areas that are outside the MNO?
Mr. Shamchuk, I'll just pass this one to you.
Sorry, Councilor Henderson, terribly sorry. Could you repeat the question just a second?
Well, the 1.8 meters is unlikely to ever be used in the MNO since the maximum basement height is 1.5, but we have area, but the ruling doesn't, is this, this isn't just about the MNO, it's about the ruling citywide, correct? So we probably have conditions where the basements are higher outside the MNO. Is that, is that the case?
That is correct. See, basements that high is not a common greenfield development, for example.
So it would allow for a basement, it would allow for a deck to come off the back door or the front door in the MNO, but it wouldn't allow for 1.8-meter height to the basement? Correct?
That's right. The MNO, you know, doesn't, this isn't being over in by MNO, or these proposals are overriding the MNO, sorry.
So I suppose theoretically someone could have a step up, but it seems unlikely. And what would we do in the circumstance if someone came in, in the MNO and wanted to have their deck step up? I'm really struggling to imagine why they would, but theoretically, I suppose it would be possible, but it would still have to, there'd be other kind of things we'd look at in the bill, in the, in the building rules on that. This is really just about site coverage, correct?
That's right. This discussion around increasing the height from 1 to 1.8 meters is about calculating that portion of the deck, which is up to 1.8 meters, in or out of site coverage. That's what it's about.
So, and can I just do a double check as well, while, since we're here anyway, around this question of the, of the side yards for accessory buildings and what the thinking is on that?
Certainly. So, you know, some of the comments we heard with respect to concern around drainage, for example, you know, the drainage bylaw remains in place. You can't impede a drainage valve, for example, and if there's, I need to have safe access to a site, that's important to maintain. And when it comes to the amount of room that we could have getting in and out of a space for our firefighters, that's typically 0.9 meters or greater. What we're talking about in a scenario like this is. is putting your shed close to your fence line by 30 centimeters more, right? We're not talking about citing a house or a garage in such a way that it makes it impossible to access the back alley. That's what the intent of this is about, is about citing your accessory structures in a way that gives you a bit more amenity space in your area to enjoy. It's not about capping accesses in and out of the lot.
Right, so what would happen? Let's go to a scenario where somebody did choose to put sheds all along the back, and we would have other ways to say, no, you're not allowed to do that in terms of access?
They would potentially be running into issues with the safety codes, fire code, which governs access to sites and so on.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for members of council on the new information? Any other new information?
Yes, I would just like to say that 0.9 meters is not enough for a wheelchair. I thought the city plan was going to make the city more accessible. So, you must consider that. Thank you.
So, I think I might be able to help a little bit with this discussion.
Okay, hold on, I've just got to identify everybody here.
Sorry, it's Mick Graham from Idea.
Yeah, so that was Ms Zubat. And then I just have to check and see if there are any questions for Ms Zubat on her new information? Councillor Henderson? Or were you on there from before? Okay, no. Okay, Mr Graham, go ahead.
So, my understanding of the change is to allow someone to shift one, sort of their garage within two feet of the fence, so 0.6 meters, giving them more space on the other side of the yard, right? So, I don't think the intention was to impinge on access to the alley is just to create a little more space on the other side. And as far as the height of the deck goes, you see that when there's walkout basements? Sometimes by levels are up that high, but if it's a walkout or a reverse walkout, so you've got a big slope at the front or the back of the house, that's when you'll run into decks that are six feet off the off-grade.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr Graham? Any other new information? Going once, going twice? Someone want to move closure of the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll move closure of the public hearing.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. Need a secondary? I'll second it.
Second.
Please vote.
Yes, madam clerk.
Councillor Paquette down for the second there.
We're just missing councillor Hamilton's vote.
I'm a yes.
Thank you, we have 13 votes, Mr Mayor.
Display the vote, please. Carried unanimously.
I'll move first reading of 3.6, and I will speak to it briefly.
Secondary?
Yeah, second. Sorry to know if you're going to do it.
No, thank you, councillor Paquette, okay. Councillor Henderson, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I think we're being, it was interesting that the 3.5, you know, went through too easily and, you know, by separating 3.6 out, which I appreciate, you know, is a slightly different conversation. But, you know, I think some of the things actually that we've spent debating as part of 3.6 are not particularly bold moves. I think they facilitate some things that have been annoyance for people, that, you know, that the homeowner wants to put a deck in and has to get a permit, you know, when it really just is a slab on the concrete or on the back of the property. You know, the side yard piece, you know, the largest piece of this, I think, and I understand that the variance changes feels like a bold move, but in reaction, in reality, it lines up with the reality that we've been dealing with because all we're really doing is making sure that the neighbor is still protected and that becomes paramount and lining up with the STAB test, which is the same. And, you know, we fought this the other way around to see if there was another way to get STAB to play by our rules, but we can't get there. So, I think the focus is still there on protecting the neighbor. That has not changed. This just takes off the second test, which is there had to be a demonstrated hardship. And I think the larger move here is the one that does open up a little bit on the ability to do secondary suites and garden suites and take some of the restrictions off that. That's the one true bold move in here. And I think what's really good about that, and we've, you know, we've been slowly opening up the rules about secondary suites since I got here. There was a lot of nervousness to begin with, and they have actually proved to be, I think, quite beneficial and are a really good way of creating more density in a neighborhood and more use of a neighborhood and more use of a space without particularly changing the built form, without particularly changing the feel or nature of a neighborhood. So, I think that's the one bold thing that is in here. I think the others are kind of things that hopefully will make life easier for everybody and not create particular harm. I have concerns about the air conditioners, but I'm not sure what we have in place here was the best solution anyway. So, I'm going to do a subsequent to make sure we don't lose that piece of work. But I think based on that, I think this is not, I think we may have mislabeled this in a way by saying that it's bold. I think the really bold, the truly bold stuff is coming up in the zoning bylaw review, which has another two years of discussion to it before it gets passed, or at least a year and a half. So, this is really just trying to catch a couple of little things in the meantime that hopefully can make life easier for everybody.
Thank you, councillor Nack.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I just really wanted to echo councillor Henderson's last point when I read through this. These were moves that I actually didn't feel were particularly large, knowing all that's been talked about over the last few years. And so, I think, and again echoing what councillor Henderson said, I think the secondary suites or the garden suites piece is the biggest. And yet, for the same reason that he noted, I haven't heard the concerns that I think that fear had first existed when this had been talked about. So, I reckon I got a request to be brief because I know one of our colleagues is trying to get to another meeting. So, I just want to say I think this is a really positive step. I don't think this is as significant as other moves. And I hope that through the other more significant conversations, we do have those really in-depth conversations. We make sure we talk through them so that people can feel like they fully, make sure they fully understand that when that time comes for the new council. So, thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments before we vote on first reading? Seeing none, please vote.
Yes, madam clerk.
We have 13 votes, Mr Mayor.
Display the vote. Carried, 12 to 1.
I'll move second reading of 3.6.
Second.
Please vote on second reading.
Yes, madam clerk.
Thank you, councillor Katerina. And we have 13 votes, Mr Mayor.
Display the vote, please. Carried.
I'll move consideration for third reading of 3.6.
Second. Yes, madam clerk.
To allow third reading to proceed, please vote.
We have 13 votes, Mr Mayor.
Display the vote. Carried.
And I will move third reading of, is it charter by law? Charter by law? Yeah, charter by law 19503.
Second.
Third and final reading, please vote.
Yes, madam clerk.
We have 13 votes.
Display the vote, please. Carried 12 to 1. And subsequent councillor Henderson?
Yeah, I sent it to the, I don't know if I have it worded correctly. I did send it out, and I haven't had a chance to look back and see. But I base, something like that. The admin look at possible tools to control the nuisance conditions on neighbors created by air conditioners and report back on those tools, I think. Is that what I wrote in the end? It's not quite, yeah, close enough. I just think we need to do some more work on this. So, I think Ms Zubat's point's well taken that just because it's not working now doesn't mean we have the answer. I think there is a role we need to play in this.
Secondary?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor McKean. Okay. Provide a report to committee. Timeline, that would be 12 weeks unless otherwise.
I, you know, I'm not, I think we just have to make sure this work gets done. I'm not sure there's huge urgency. I know that, you know, I know that the dockets full and planning, so I, you know, it's a, whatever. I mean, I prefer that we...
Q4?
That we're thorough with it.
You're a Q4?
Q4 works, yeah. And by the end of the year, Q3?
I, maybe Q3. Yeah, let's do Q3.
Okay. All right, so that's the timeline. Questions on this, councillor McKean?
Yeah, I want to ask it really quick before you rule me out of order. I was wondering if the mover is going to do another subsequent motion on the material brought to us from the folks from Idea.
I don't have one planned. Sorry, I didn't get that far. Focused on this one. I maybe do answer your question quickly. I had heard that that work was going to be moving forward anyway, although maybe not quite as quickly as Idea wanted. So, unless we feel we want to speed it up, which I suspect will create all sorts of other engagement problems, I suspect we may have to live with it the way it is. But it's up to you. I can't say how I would vote if someone brought that subsequent forward.
Especially since that's not what's before us at this moment. It was very slow to rule that out of order, but I thought it might save time. Okay. Any other questions pertaining to this subsequent motion around air conditioners? If we let all the air out of this one, looks like we have, please vote.
Yes, madam clerk.
Thank you, councillor Katerina. We're just missing a few votes. Councillor Benga? And councillor Esslinger?
Yes.
Thank you. And councillor Paquette?
Spinning wheels got to go around, I am a yes.
Thank you. And also councillor Walters, although I don't see him on the meet anymore, so. He may be absent.
Yeah, he had to, he let me know he had to run to another follow-up to the regional thing he was doing earlier. So, he's on council business again. So...
Mr Mayor?
Yes, councillor McKean?
A point of information?
Is it related to the vote, or can I conclude the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please do that.
Yeah, please display the vote. And that's carried 12 to nothing. Okay, a point of information?
Because we had a number of people show up from Idea, it just feels like we're leaving that hanging. And so, I just wanted to ask Ms Petron if, in fact, her group would even have the capacity to do a quick turnaround of the amendments that were suggested that would allow different built form with secondary suites?
Councillor McKean, while the suggestion received through the correspondence today appeared to be simple, there are a number of complexities with making the change to actually make it work. So, it does represent a policy shift, and we do need to do the analysis related to it. And I think there's more than just a couple tweaks in a definition in terms of supporting that. So, we are committed to doing that work through the zoning bylaw renewal. And definitely, you know, the innovation and the approach to gentle density is exactly what we're looking to implement through the zoning bylaw renewal.
Mr Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence and council's indulgence and the answer from Ms Petron. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other subsequent motions arising? Not hearing any, then I'll now call for notices of motion. I understand there's at least one. Councillor Paquette?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. At the February 22, 2021 city council meeting, I will move the following. One, that administration in consultation with Epcore return to utility committee with a report on the following. A, the potential impacts to the city of Edmonton headwaters that may result from the four currently approved coal mining projects and for future mining projects should the government of Alberta choose to rescind the 1976 coal mining policy. B, an outline of tools the municipality has to protect these headwaters, including but not limited to mitigation for potential impacts of high rates of selenium in our water supply and the possibility of the municipality working in regional partnership to seek intervenor status with the provincial government. C, recommendations on the feasibility of developing a headwater protection strategy for the city of Edmonton. And two, that the mayor on behalf of city council write a letter to the provincial government to request municipalities are consulted as major stakeholders on future coal policy change. And I will be sending that out to everyone with also a little bit of information on the justification.
Thank you. Notices received. Any other notices of motion? Not seeing any at this time. Then our business is concluded for today. Thank you all very much, and we're adjourned.